We're on.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council Regular Session Meeting for February 5, 2025. The first item on our agenda, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor White, could I ask you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. Item number two is roll call. It looks like all councilors are present and accounted for. Nice to see you this evening, councilors. Item number three is our public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:01. Moving right along. Item number four is to consider acceptance of minutes. And councilors, we have two sets of minutes this evening. The first is the regular meeting minutes for January 15, 2025, and at this time I would accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor White. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Any discussion or changes? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Councilor Glazier?
Aye.
Councilor Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblu?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Abstain.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 601. All right, and the second set of meetings is the January 29, 2025 Warrant Article Public Hearing Minutes, and at this time I would accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Dorblu. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Any discussion or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll. Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamontina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Abstain.
Council Blackstone?
Abstain.
Council Ward?
Abstain.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 403. Excellent. Okay, and then we get to the biggest section of our agenda, to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six this evening. The very first is for Chesney York, appointment to the Police Department by Town Clerk Terry Littlefield. Congratulations, Officer York, and at this time Chief Jordan and Cook Littlefield, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us tonight and the opportunity to come here and introduce our newest officer. This is Officer Chesney York. She comes to us from the town of Corinth, New York. And for those wondering, it is a small town of about 6,000 residents. It's kind of near Lake George, if anybody knows where that is. That's where she's coming to us from. After attending high school there, she went to the State University at Adirondack, where she obtained an associate's degree, and she moved on to the State University at Pottsdown, where she completed her bachelor's degree. And currently, she holds a bachelor's degree in psychology and an associate's in criminal justice. Okay, well, you get it right. She's accompanied here tonight by her mother, Michelle Marlowe, and her father, Paul York, that are sitting right here behind you. They came all the way from New York to be with her tonight. Just a little about her. She's an avid athlete. She played softball both in high school. She played in college as well. She's expressed some interest in helping out with the local teams here, so our athletic director is pretty excited about that. She spends much of her spare time working out. She's joined the local athletic club here in town. In May, she will be attending the 200th Police Academy in Concord, which I'm sure she's going to do fabulous. She's done fabulous so far. So we have a couple things to go over. One is a notice of appointment, which I'll read, and then the town clerk is going to actually square her in and give her her local office. So... You want to do this up front here? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Okay, or do you guys want the microphone? All right. So to Chesney York, whereas there is a vacancy in the Newmarket Police Department for the office or position of police officer, in order as I have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties, essential functions, and responsibilities of the said office and position based upon your knowledge, skills, and qualifications, and whereas I have been authorized to appoint you to the said office or position, I do hereby appoint you to the said office or position within the Newmarket Police Department, County of Rockingham, State of New Hampshire, and you shall be subject to the liabilities, rules, regulations, policies, procedures, directives, and lawful orders of the Newmarket Police Department as prescribed by the Chief of Police, so long as you hold that position. You are hereby ordered to take the prescribed oath as required by the state law and the state Rockinghamshire Constitution. Today is the 5th of February, 2025. That will be administered by you.
So no person appointed police officer shall assume his or her duties without subscribing to the following oath of office, consistent with RSA 92:2 and Part 2, Article 84 of New Hampshire Constitution. Let's try and raise your right hand. So you can just repeat after me.
Okay.
So I state your name.
I, Chesney York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And will support, support the Constitution thereof, so help me God.
And will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God.
And I state your name.
And I, Chesney York.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent upon me as a.
Accumbent upon me as a.
Police officer for the town of Newmarket, New Hampshire.
For the town of Newmarket, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help me God.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Oh, cool.
Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come here. I think it's important that you see our new people and that they get a chance to see you folks. So thank you again for your time. We're going to take off because her family is hungry after.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer York, and welcome. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mom and Dad. Councilors, we just lost our crowd.
Sure know how to clear a room.
Okay, the second item on, second nomination, appointment, election, or resignation is Benjamin Buckley for the Arts and Tourism Commission. This states to transfer membership from full-time member to alternate member with a term expiring April 2026, and at this time I would accept a motion to approve that transfer.
No.
The...
He's, Ben is stepping down. Per our conversation, he's sent you an email to step down as my position as a full-time member and to be changed to an alternate. He needs to still fill out a form.
Okay.
You need to fill out a reappointment.
Okay, so we need to not act on either of these.
Right.
Okay. So proper procedure is just...
Any, any new appointment should...
To table these, like, like...
They're not, technically, they're not on the...
Okay, so we won't act on these until we receive the actual...
Applications.
Applications for both. Okay.
Because you can't, you need to actually allow other people, if they want to put in, be able to apply for this. So that's why you can't just take an alternate and move them up.
Okay.
There may be somebody out there who wants to put in.
Okay.
So...
That makes sense. So we will not act on item B, and we will also then not act on item C, Doug Spitzer, transfer from alternate to full-time member. The directive is to ask that Mr. Buckley and Mr. Spitzer complete the, complete the resignation and then the application, and for Mr. Buckley, the reapplication to serve as an alternate member.
Exactly.
Okay. And we hope you do all those things. All right, the next appointment is Wayne Rosa for his reappointment to the Zoning Board of Adjustment with a term expiring April 2028, and at this time I would accept a motion to approve that reappointment.
I will make the motion. Second.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Thank you, Councilor Dorblu. Is there any discussion on Mr. Rosa's reappointment?
So can I ask a technical question?
Yeah.
So he hasn't applied, right?
He has.
He didn't.
Wayne Rosa has.
Okay.
Yes, Wayne, yes. I know it got all confusing there for a hot minute.
Right. I didn't see it in the notes, but I'll look again.
Well, I, I recommend that we reappoint Mr. Rosa to the position. He's been a very good member of the CBA thus far and a very longtime resident of Newmarket.
Okay. Any other discussion on Mr. Rosa's appointment? All right, seeing none, if you could call the roll. Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamontina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 70. Okay, and the next item is Rebecca Carmier, resignation from the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, and at this time I would accept a motion to, to approve that resignation.
I will make the, oh, you go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to accept her resignation with regret.
Okay. Thank you, Council Lamontina. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Council Ward, thank you very much. Any, any discussion on, on this particular resignation?
I'll just add Rebecca was there a short time, but she, she did contribute during the short time that she was there. Just unfortunate for work, for business here in Newmarket just doesn't allow her the time.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate the time that she spent on it as well, and hopefully we'll be able to find another way to engage her. She's dedicated to the town, so that's wonderful. Okay, seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll. Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamontina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 70. But it's a sad "aye." Can you add that to the notes? Okay, and our last appointment today is Julia Sinclair, appointment to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, the term expiring April 2025. The term expiring April 2025, is that right?
Yes, I have a question about that.
Okay, so well, at this point, I would accept a motion to approve this, this appointment.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Council Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council White. Okay, any discussion?
Okay, so Ms. Sinclair, she was the one, a while back, we had two people that were applying for the one position, and we picked the other person because they applied first and all that sort of stuff. I've talked with her. I think she'll make an excellent member of the Energy and Environment Committee. She seems very dedicated. I did have a question about where it, the term expires April 25. She's filling a slot. Can we expand that now? Or she'll, okay, so she will have to reapply two months.
Yes.
Two months, okay.
Okay. Thank you, that was actually good context. Any other discussion on Ms. Sinclair's application? Council Ward?
Yeah, I've been working with Ms. Sinclair on the Newmarket Cemetery Day, which is on May 17, and we have a Facebook event now. But no, she's a very nice person, and she's a, you know, very dedicated to the civic side of things, so I think she'll be a great addition.
Any other discussion on Ms. Sinclair's application? I did just want to add that Julie, you do have the distinction of having submitted the most enthusiastic application for, for an assignment on a committee, and I am very delighted to, to be able to actually put my, add my voice in support of that appointment. Okay, seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll. Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamontina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 70. Okay, and the next item, sorry, thank you very much, councilors. The next item on our agenda is the Report of the Town Manager, and so at this time I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I know the Council Lamontina was concerned. There is no school tomorrow.
There's, oh.
We just received the email.
Snow?
Snow.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, the whole day is canceled.
The whole day, yeah. Just a heads, update on the fiscal year '25 expense and revenues. December completed 50% of the fiscal year, operating budget 55% expended, which is lower than the last fiscal year, and revenues continue to be aligned with our projections, nothing out of the ordinary right now. The next topic, I wanted to, please note that I put it in italics before, that when I wrote this, it was on January 29, on Wednesday. It just, I want to reiterate it because this was us running around for two days not knowing what was going on with decisions that we were hearing from Washington. As you heard, on January 27, the Office of Management and Budget instructed federal agencies to pause dispersing funds to all open awards starting on January 28 at 5:00 PM. That allowed an assessment of funding alignments with legal and policy priorities. We did know, did, at the time, we did know that the federal court issued a temporary stay. We didn't know how long it was going to last. Of course, the President, after I submitted this, withdrew that order to hold all the grants. We were concerned about our dispatch grant. That was the email I received that morning, that we weren't, that project was on hold. As soon as I called the Chief of Police, he was meeting with the dispatch company for the installation. But we were assured by Department of Justice that it was unaffected. We did want to get confirmation from Senator Shaheen's office, but they're saying just because of timing, we were going to be okay. However, we have other grants that we are monitoring, especially we're asking for approvals in a month on some congressional earmarks, that if those don't come through, we need to make a decision. What do we do at that point in time? I think, you know, it's just some, we're monitoring the situation. It's just fluid. And I just, you know, I saw an article today, Portsmouth almost lost $3 million because of that. So just so, you know, I mean, we're, again, it was like hour by hour, we're getting different stories of what was going on those few days. So if there's sometimes we don't, we'll say something about funding, we say, we don't know. We don't know. Just want to let you know what we're going through there. The next item, I don't, I'm not sure how many people know this, but this has been a very big, it's been an issue, and a very big one for years, and that's the double utility poles. If you've ever noticed, there's, whenever they break, put in a new pole, the old pole stays seemingly forever, because you have to get every utility on the pole to move their wires over to the new one. Sometimes they don't even wait, they just cut off the bottom part, and you have a little piece of a pole hanging up in the air, and they can be hazards and obstruct sidewalks and roadways. In 2020, we joined a formal complaint against the utilities, along with Dover, Somersworth, Exeter, Porser, Durham, Hampton, and Newington, and we requested that the PUC establish a consistent policy for all utilities to remove poles within 30 to 60 days. On January 23, I met with representatives from the PUC and the utilities to talk about a pilot program aimed at eliminating double poles. The meeting provided an overview of the pilot program intended to address the excessive number of utilities' poles statewide. They're going to use Newmarket as one of the pilot communities to try this. Basically, they're hiring a private contractor to come in and move the wires over for everybody, and then they'll come in and take the poles down. There, it's going to be Hampton, North Hampton, Exeter, and Newmarket. Why those four? Half of them are Unitil communities, half of them are ever-source communities. So we'll see how that works. They're going to be doing Hampton and North Hampton, of course, first, because you don't want those trucks in the middle of the streets in the summertime in Hampton or North Hampton, so it'll be later on in the warmer weather. We do, are going to have to look at what we have up there, because we do have wires for schools, network, as well as the fire, the old pole box lines spaced still, so we're going to be looking at that and working with them. They're also, they are cognizant of the municipal budgets that have already been, well, are being passed, that that's an additional cost, because we'd have to pay the contractor to move over the lines. We're going over everything from police details and what, what is needed. One of the concerns is they want some flexibility, whether or not they need to use law enforcement all the time. My explanation to them is, we, we don't have law enforcement officers all the time because of the shortages, so I don't see why flaggers wouldn't be a, certified flaggers would be an issue sometimes. Again, this is a pilot program, but hopefully this will solve it sometime this year for us, then, then it will go on statewide. And what the, what the idea is after that is whenever a new pole is put in, a private contractor will come over, move all the wires over, and then leave so the pole can get removed.
Just quick, just quickly, PUC stands for?
Public Utilities Commission.
Okay.
Sorry.
I mean, I guess, but I, yeah.
Yeah.
Council Dorblu?
So clarification, then, the, who hires the, the contractor and who is responsible for the, for the cost?
It's an agreement between the utilities that are on there and the public, in the Public Utilities Commission. So the Utilities Commission, it basically, it's sort of the one saying, this is who that contractor is going to be. They put out, I think they put out a bid.
Okay.
So they'll be doing it for all of them. The utilities have to pay.
Gotcha, okay.
So, in my understanding, I mean, in the room, they weren't shy on the difficult one was consolidated, the telephone company, because it's shorthanded and it's just not as needed as it used to be, so.
Okay, so the PUC took on the, the role of essentially...
Mediator.
Being the, you know, the master of affairs there and doing that, okay, good. Well, that's, that's encouraging. A PUC is doing something worthwhile. That's good.
It's a change.
And that is actually all I have tonight. We're in that interregnum period between deliberative session and the elections, where not a lot happens, so.
Thank you, Town Manager. Are there any other questions or comments for the Town Manager?
I did have one. First, thank you and everybody that works with you for your flexibility and your perseverance in the face of these shifting messages and priorities and all the things. I know it can be, it can be unsettling and challenging trying to, trying to stay on top of, trying to stay on top of things when it's uncertain, so we appreciate it. The other question that I had was, is there a possibility that depending on the outcome of some, of whatever happens, that this could affect things that have already been put onto the warrant article?
How do I say, "I don't know"?
Probably like that.
Yeah, I, I want to say, I'm, I'm not as worried as saying completely, "I don't know."
Okay.
But let me say this, who knows?
Okay.
It's more of a who knows than I don't know. Everything is being done correctly.
Okay.
You know, we're asking, it's, I mean, it hasn't gone through all the processes through the Senate yet, but it's, it's in the glacial speed of the Senate procedures to get these, in the congressional procedures, to get the earmarks.
Okay.
But who knows at the end?
Okay. I think my, my, the reason that I was asking is because I know that during the deliberative session, you know, some of the items that went onto the warrant article were, were discussed and were put on, you know, discussed with respect to loan forgiveness and things like that, and so to grant things so that if things fall apart, are there, are there things, are there...
We put it...
Things that the town needs to do in order to make sure that any new information is communicated appropriately?
The warrant authorizes the town to negotiate and issue notes.
Okay.
It doesn't say we have to negotiate and issue the notes. We just have the authority to do so.
Okay.
And we can wait. When, during the Great, not the Great, the Great Recession, a lot of people got the authority to bond, but due to the economy, held off until it was a little bit well-known, but they had the authority out there just to make sure prices were lower.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was a weedy question, and thank you for helping me make sense of it. All right, any other questions for the Town Manager before we move on? All right. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Council, please.
So the arts, culture, and tourism met last night. There's a few projects that are being discussed that I wanted to bring up tonight. One being a mural project on the library. On the outside of the building, there are architectural recesses. They almost look like they should be windows, so they're looking at potentially putting some, some of the same type of material that we have on the Willie Park mural, where it like adheres to the brick, doing those in those recesses. those in those recesses. Um, or either that or a, uh, similar to the ones that are in the Pocket Park where it's these metal frames where we've printed on both sides of it an image, we'll flip it to coincide with the 300th anniversary. So, we know one side of the, the things may, maybe, uh, you know, would be for the 300th, and the other side would be something else. Um, so, looking at that and talking with the different organizations in town that might want to be a part of it. Then we have for the Pocket Park where we have those steel frames already in place next to Johnny Boston's, there is, uh, we're doing a, we've done four flips, I believe, and we're, the next one will just be the, like, selected ones from different artists that have already been in. So, some of, you know, the, we will have seen all of them, but it's going to be a mixture of all the artists so far, and then a, a new signage that'll explain which artists are, is for which one. Um, and we are looking at the Elm Street mural, um, that goes all the way up Elm Street. Just different possibilities that go along with it, rehabilitation, preservation, or, you know, redoing it. There was, part of the town survey was, you know, what people wanted, and it was a 33, 33, 33 split. So, really, really helpful.
That's fascinating.
Yeah, so, you know, 33% wanted to keep it the way it is, 33% wanted to bring it back to life, and 33% wanted something new. So, no decisions have been made on any of that at this point, but we're exploring options and, and costs, and, um, along with that, the T-Mobile has a hometown grant that they do yearly, uh, so we, uh, we will be applying for that grant for the amount of $50,000 to, to help with whatever one of those options that the commission finds the town, you know, would most benefit from, I, I guess, would be how to word that. And then, um, the last thing is the, the rec department does a garden tour every year. Um, it's how does your garden grow? And it's, um, they just have these gardens that have volunteered to have people come visit them in their yards, and they, they set up a map on their website. We're looking at combining that with artists and doing, uh, how does your garden grow with artists that have in some way to show their art during that tour. Um, and that's still all being decided, but those are the big projects that we're kind of looking at the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Counselor Glazberg. Um, any questions or comments for Counselor Glazberg? Okay. Um, any other committee reports this evening? Counselor Lamontina?
Okay. I have a lot, so I'm going to read this to make sure that I don't miss anything here. So, last month, I reported that, um, Community Power had set the rate at 8.9 cent for the February 1st through July time period. This past Friday, uh, the Community Power Board of Directors met, and we agreed to raise the rates, um, the granite basic rate for residential and small commercial businesses, previously announced for at 8.9 cents per kilo, uh, per kilowatt hour, will now go to 9.7 cents per kilowatt hour, um, effective March 3rd, 2025. Um, that rate will apply from March through July. Um, all other products, the granite basic, clean 50, clean 100, those will, um, see corresponding increases. The 9.7 cent rate will be higher than Eversource's rate of 8.920 cents. It's less than eight tenths of a cent difference, but, um, it is higher. Um, the new rate is expected to cost the average households, Newmarket household, about $5 per month. Okay. Why the increase? CP CNH is required to cover our expenses. It's in the contract that we have with Newmarket and all the other towns. CP CNH had negotiated a contract for power with a, um, Newmark, a New Hampshire generator, okay? Um, and that contract would have met significant portion of our electric needs for the, for the time period. That contract, um, had to be canceled, okay? Um, and per policy that we have, internal policy, uh, we have to have by X percent of our electricity before the rate period begins, so we had no choice, so we had to go out and buy power at the various rates. I just want to iterate that, um, since launching, Community Power launching in 2023, um, the app, they've saved an average of 8.7% over, um, Eversource's rate. And Newmarket Community Power, um, we launched in April of last year, and the first nine months of our operation, we saved residents $103,000 compared to what they would have paid under Eversource. Also, too, we, Community Power offers some different products, some cleaner energy products, and we have a handful of people in Newmarket that have opted to take that cleaner energy. Um, those individual residents, um, have prevented 14 tons of CO2 going into the atmosphere. So, even though the rates are slightly higher, it's our recommendation that we stay with Community Power for the time being, that, um, in the long run, it will be better for Newmarket. Um, I do want to make it clear to residents, um, they can opt out of Newmarket Community Power at any time, um, with no penalty, okay? Uh, simply by calling 1-866-603-7697. All they have to do is they have to have their Eversource account number, okay? And keep in mind that, um, that if you opt out, it doesn't take effect until after your next meter reading. Okay. There are a couple of other issues going on with, uh, Community Power. I've shared them with the, the Town Manager. Um, but there's one that I think that the council should be aware of, and that is, the Public Utilities Commission has said to the, um, utilities, uh, Eversource, Unitil, and Liberty, um, basically, you can, you don't have to purchase, um, you can purchase more electricity on a day-to-day basis, as opposed to, before they were mandated to buy X percent of their, um, electricity before the rate period began. Now, they're being, uh, offered the opportunity to buy fewer amount of electricity before the rate period begins and buy more on a day-to-day basis, which makes it a little bit more, um, susceptible to increases in rates and whatever. Public Utilities Commission has also said to the utilities, you have an option that, um, if you undercollect for some reason or other, you underestimate what the price is going to be, you can get that undercollection or recover that undercollection, uh, from all customers through your delivery fees. So, in other words, if you're on Newmarket Community Power, uh, and Eversource comes up with, you know, "Oh, we're only going to charge a penny for our rate," um, they can make up that difference through the delivery fees at a later point in time. Okay. Um, and it, that, like I say, affects everybody, not just those on, uh, Newmarket Community Power. Okay. Um, there is a House Bill, House Bill 760, that says you can't do that, that the utilities would, if they have to do any recoveries, they have to recover it from their own customers, and they have to recover it through the fees, okay? Um, and that's likely to pass. So, that's, that with that, and there's one other thing. Um, this April is the end of my third year or my term as the, um, on the Board of Directors for Community Power, and I'm not renewing my thing. If anybody wants to, um, nominate themselves to be on the Board of Directors for Community Power, I will certainly give you the, the paperwork for that.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Lamontina?
Okay. Counselor Lamontina, thank you so much for that report. I know it was not an easy one, um, to, to deliver. I know that, um, this has been a particular challenge, and we appreciate the work that you're doing, and we know that the, that Community Power has, um, saved a lot of money for New Hampshire, for Newmarket citizens, and we'll be, um, looking forward to getting, to getting the ship righted in the, in the next, next go-round.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, are there any other committee reports this evening? Okay, then we will move on to, there are no resolutions or ordinances in the first or second reading, so we'll move on to new business and correspondence. Is there any correspondence to the town council to be read into the record this evening?
There are none.
Okay. Um, are there any closing comments by town councils this evening? Counselor Ward?
Um, when I was at the 300th Committee, uh, someone had asked about town, uh, town rep on the Newmarket Business Association, and I'm not sure, they said at some point, we had someone as a representative at the business association and suggested an interest in having that happen again. Is there, and I'm not sure if that's, are we allowed to have a town rep on a, a private?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're invited.
Okay.
Counselor Glazberg?
I was on the Newmarket Association, uh, and, and the, the time that it was conflicted, so I brought it here, and we, I, I think the, the discussion was that there's already a town employee that is, that goes to the business association meetings.
That's right.
And, and that was kind of, uh, where it was left last.
If I remember correctly, the meetings were like...
They're Friday in the middle of the...
Yeah.
Like, uh, two, I think it's at 2:00 in the afternoon.
It's only once a month, right?